Councilman Jones is going to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilman Parker.
Let's bow our heads and pray. I'll be having to follow. Again, we congregate here in this building, this great city, which thou hast given us. We pray now for your guidance and your directions as we come before your people tonight. Bless this councilship as a whole, the city of Pasagoula, and all of its constituents. It is in your son Jesus' name we pray tonight and we ask. Amen.
Please, woman, the pledge. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, any amendments to the agenda? All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Sir, move.
Any further discussion? On the paper, signified as saying aye. Any opposed? Is there anyone here to address the council on an issue that is not on the agenda? On an issue that is not on the agenda, please sign in. Anybody here to address the council not on the agenda? All right. Community recognition, is there any members of the youth council here? Mayor's youth council, no members? Okay, tonight's business spotlight. Let's... Business spotlight tonight is Jack's By the Tracks. Tonight's business spotlight is a popular sushi and live music joint in downtown Pasagoula. Let's watch the video.
Do you know Jack? If you enjoy great food, live music, and a funky atmosphere, then you've probably been to Jack's By the Tracks located at 709 Krebs Avenue in downtown Pasagoula, open for lunch and dinner Wednesday to Saturday. Owner Mark Garrison and his wife DJ opened up Jack's By the Tracks in October of 2011 with the idea of a contemporary juke joint in the heart of Pasagoula. Jack's By the Tracks has been serving up southern sushi, or mississushi, and other popular menu items like po-boys, tacos, tapas, and cold drinks for residents and visitors for the past eight Jack's is also a very popular spot to hear live music from local bands and other artists that come here to play, all the way from New Orleans to Pensacola. Follow their website or Facebook page to see the lineup of upcoming bands. Make plans to check out Jack's By the Tracks this weekend, and as always, don't forget to support our local restaurants and businesses and think Pasagoula first.
Good job on the video, Caroline. I just wanted to give a special shout-out to Jack's because they allowed us to host the Pasagoula Run paddle battle pre-party last Friday night and even offered a discount to the racers that showed up. It was a huge hit to all those guys from out of town. So, I encourage you to go by and support our local business, Jack's By the Tracks. Enjoy some good food and live music. Okay, next up is a public hearing, property cleanup. Mr. Scruggs, do you have the mic? Got a lot of stuff on here.
Yes, it is. The first item is actually supposed to be... It is a... Caroline, it's supposed to be the appeal to condemnation.
What's that?
There's two slides that are... two shows that are basically the same. We can probably work through this one to give you an idea as to what we are dealing with. 1306 Kenneth is a property that was condemned by this department last... it would be on my calendar, but it would be on May 6. We posted the notice primarily... this property has quite a long history, but in 2018, in August 2018, it was found guilty of a handful of code violations, dealing with plumbing, electrical work, boarding house, and working on cars and a few other items. We had obtained an inspection warrant through Judge Fundren's office to see if the repairs had been done. Based on letters we had submitted to Mr. Green for the inspection of his property, he did not allow us to enter it or for inspection, so we went through the process of getting an inspection warrant. When we went in and actually looked at the property, we found it to be in a condition that was non-habitable. This is primarily the front living room, and it is the first thing we saw when we logged in. At that point, we were really in a position to condemn the structure, you know, just based on the amount of material and debris that was in there, but we did proceed with going through the house and doing some inspections. As you can see, this is the living room, and the ceiling is what is showing the exposure with the plywood decking and then the rafters, of course insulation that's poking through as well. Yeah, by looking at this structure on the outside and throughout the whole building, what we've seen is that there's a good amount of roof failure that is allowing the water to, you know, come in to the ceiling areas, and that is what's causing the failure of the ceilings and the roof. This is, you know, just more pictures of the living room, the front porch. This was a concern. This was the first thing we noticed, and we thought it was going to be somewhat easier to address, you know, access. You cannot get in and cannot get out of the property if you... the doors are blocked. And of course, as the judge found him guilty of having a boarding house, it means that it's not just him he's endangering, it's his tenants as well. So, you know, we had a major concern here. This is a kitchen. Whether you're doing a boarding house or just doing a single-family residential, you've got to have a sanitary place for cooking and eating and washing your dishes, and this is required by the International Building... International Property Maintenance Code. This is in severe violation, you know, especially if, like I said, you are operating a boarding house. The bedroom, there is actually a bed underneath some of this that may or may not be slept in, I'm not sure, but it is a... this is overall condition of the house. When it's the exterior, once again, we continue to see problems just around the entire structure. This door is actually has a... basically a piece of, like, cardboard that has patched it so that it would be, you know, at least appear to be a little more sturdy than it actually is. Throughout the entire bottom area of the building, you'll see these rotted wood and siding that is just, you know, it's really not anything there anymore. Once again, you know, I will get into a little bit more of it later, but when you look at the failure of the roof system, it's everything going down the studs, down the siding, from the interior and exterior, and it's what's causing the rot to occur. This backside where the air conditioner is in, it's been patched with just OSB board. It is not a suitable exterior finish, and it does not conform to building code. You know, arrows are pointing to just rot, rot, rot throughout the... around the exterior of the structure. Now, you know, we actually got down and tried to see what was underneath it, and, you know, the foundation is just in possibly worse condition than the rest of the structure. You... these arrows are pointing to a lot of makeshift fixes, some of which are what we refer to as scabbing, where you put a piece of wood adjacent to another piece of wood, you nail it together, and hope that it somehow strengthens it and holds it together. But you can see, when done properly, you're doing these on actual piers or foundations, meaning that the scabbing that you're actually trying to secure the other boards with are actually resting on top of a foundation or some kind of a structure that will actually provide some support. In this case, it's the wood is just attached to wood. I mean, there's, you know, nothing is really holding it, and when you see that the rotted wood that sometimes these boards are attached to, it just really is nothing there. It's not really attached to anything. It's just attached to rotted wood. But this is an example, and this bottom picture is showing a piece of wood that just kind of goes out into nothing and is not supporting. Now, you know, as mentioned in the guilty verdict handed down by Judge Wilson, you know, it was some... referring to plumbing that was open and not connected. Here, you know, you've got in this... you've got this picture of this top left, the little box, shows what is the drain from the kitchen sink that goes down and is not connected. That means it's just running freely and open underneath the foundation. It is not connected to anything, meaning that it's not going to our sanitary water system. It's just going underneath the house. And what, once again, you know, that kind of stuff just generates more rot. Another one is by this pier in the rectangle, you'll see two pipes that are, once again, not connected. It's just not a valid plumbing system. If you look at this bottom right picture, what you'll see is some of the makeshift wiring that is present. This is a... what do you call them?
Junction box.
Not really a junction box, but a surge protector type of, you know, six or seven outlets there for, hopefully, just hooking up more electricity, but it's hanging down underneath the house in all this moisture and water. The roof, you know, the roof is, you know, about as important as the foundation, and when you go around the eaves, you'll see that there is just constant holes and rot. All of this is basically right there above your walls, which is why so much water is going down into the walls and into the studs and adjacent to the... adjacent to the siding and the interior walls. All around, there's just a significant amount of rot. Interior... this is pictures of the ceilings, showing where, you know, patch jobs and patch jobs and patch jobs have been done to try to address, you know, what is going on, you know, the failure of the roof system and the effect it has on the ceiling tiles. The floor damage, you know, this is the entranceway. These are, you know, efforts to, you know, to put together something to where you're not following through. I had a couple guys with me that aren't exactly the same size as Brad, and there were a few times they got a little concerned in walking through those rooms because this floor is just not very sturdy. And we had to bring up the non-conforming status, you know, because this is located in RC Zone, Regional Commercial Zone. Regional Commercial does not allow by right a single-family residential. He can stay there as long as he wants to as a non-conformant grandfathered use, but there are limitations associated with these uses, meaning that if the structure that houses a non-conforming use becomes damaged to a amount that's more than 50%, it cannot be rehabilitated or fixed unless it's done in a manner that is consistent with their UDO. You know, this structure is in... it far exceeds the 50% rule. I mean, I think that Jackson County has it valued at approximately $23,000. You know, you couldn't fix this for 150% of the value of the structure, so you could not do it for the 50% that is allowed by code. And this, you know, this is more on the non-conforming status of it. I'm going to stop it here. This... we're going to go through the same PowerPoint again on the next... with the public hearing, but, you know, the planning board heard Mr. Green's appeal of the condemnation at his meeting last week, last Tuesday, and it voted unanimously to uphold the recommendation of the building department to condemn this property. Mr. Green had representation at that meeting. They brought up a section of the code deals with slums and blight, which says in the event a property is determined to be slummed and blight, a hearing is required before the planning board. That is not a section that we used in the condemnation of the structure. The International Property Maintenance Code is the one we utilized, and with that, we can... we have to notice him of the condemnation, but we are not required to conduct a public hearing prior to the condemning of a structure. So, we felt as though we were in... within the constraints of the law. We felt as though we did the proper thing. We felt as though we did what we're all really required to do as code enforcement and building officials of the city, and that is if a house or structure is unsanitary and is uninhabitable, we need to condemn it, and that's what we did. Of course, this is Mr. Green's hearing. He can certainly come up and give his side of it, but it is something that we feel as though both the planning board and the building officials did the correct thing in the condemnation of the structure.
Expand on boarding. Who was... was he selling rooms, or what was the deal with that?
You know, if you go through the police reports, you know, we do know when we went on-site, there was a person that was living in the rear of the structure. We're not sure if, you know, what arrangement was being made, but we do know that, you know, she was living there. There has been allegations by this police department that individuals were actually living in the cars that were on the site as well, and I believe they've gone in and knocked on door, you know, knocked on the doors at night, and if individuals that were sleeping in the cars have looked up and, you know, and seen that, and even, I believe the police reports talk about people even admitting at the police department that they are, you know, they sleep in the cars at night. So, I mean, the boarding is in the house and around the house, is what it appears to be.
Chief?
Yes.
Can you come up just a minute? Do you have any history on this place?
It's got an extensive history. If you've been around any business close to this house, I'm sure the business owners have complained to you. For whatever reason, this property seems to draw a lot of bad actors to it. We've had drug arrests there, alleged prostitution going on. The folks that hang around there, you know, go around shoplifting. It's... you can see the pictures. It's a mess. We've historically had an issue with that little section of Kenneth Street between Market and Telephone, and this is the last... the last house there that's causing us an issue. As he talked about, people say it was a boarding house. A lot of that we derive from people giving us that as their address and telling us they live there and telling us very, sometimes unusual circumstances on how they pay the rent. But it's been a... been an issue for us for many years.
Do you believe it to be a public maintenance?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Is there somebody here to just talk about this property? Anybody here?
Well...
Anybody here to represent this property?
Yeah.
Come on up here.
Yeah.
Let me hear what you got to say about it.
Yeah, my name's John Green, and yeah, I own that property, but that... all that what he talking about? Nah.
Now, do you live there?
I was staying there. I was staying there, and I was staying with my son. I was staying, you know, wherever I had to stay, I stayed, but I had started working on my house.
So, you don't live there now?
No, I don't, no.
Where do you live now?
I stay with my son right now, Gochay.
Who... is that you?
My name's John Green.
You junior?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh...
Now, who's living there?
Ain't nobody there, because they coming there and, uh...
Condemned it?
Yeah, they put us out.
Okay.
And, uh, what happened, we had started working on the house, and, uh, and as we got started working on the house, then they came in like a rush and made me stop doing everything I had to do.
Did you get permits?
Uh...
Did you get permits to work on the house?
No, I ain't had to. It was up on the old claw.
You what?
Up on the old claw. We had to get an apartment. We just... I did board from board.
So, you didn't have to get a permit?
No, not... uh-uh.
Donovan, does he require a permit?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you do?
Yeah, well, that's... yeah.
If you take one board, I'll put another board on you.
Are you remodeling your house? Are you fixing it?
Yeah, trying to work on it.
Okay, well, you gotta have a permit.
Mr. Green, Mr. Green?
Yes, sir.
Did you ever talk to anyone from the zoning department? Anybody ever confront you personally?
Not by getting no building permit.
No, not about the permit, about your home completely?
No, nobody really... you know, he just come out and said something on the outside like the judge told him, you know, be able to take pictures from that... from the road and that right there. That's what he supposed to been doing from the get-go. He wasn't supposed to come in my house. That's why I stopped him going in my house.
How long has it been in this condition?
When I've been... like I said, for a while, but not completely. After we had started... we had started turning it, turning inside out. It wasn't in no real bad condition. It wasn't like you said, like rain was coming down in my house. No.
Mr. Donovan, did he ever receive a notice?
Uh, I mean, yeah, I mean, in the sense that when we first cited him back in 2017, we identified several things. We've got pictures of faulty wiring. We've got pictures of faulty plumbing, and those are things that an individual cannot repair on their own. You can do a lot of work at your house, but you are not able to do electrical work or plumbing work on your home, especially if you're operating a boarding house. So, I mean, he was operating outside the context of our regulations, and we never told him he was free or exempt of building permits. In fact, after the judge ruled that if you're guilty of all these, you know, we anticipated him coming by. He did not come by. We sent a letter saying we needed his back to see what's going on, and he refused to let us inspect. Now, what I want to say, what we are representing here, Mr. Mayor, is the condemnation appeal. We're not probably just jumping to the public nuisance quite yet.
Well, what I'm... so, you're at the top of the condemnation now, so...
Yeah. Yeah, it's a resolution of condemnation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it.
I got... I got something. Now, he said that I was running a rumor board. That's not so. That's not so. Now, just because I let my cousin stay with me. He been staying with me ever since 1975, ever since I've been out here. Now, what is he talking about there today? That ain't got nothing to do with what I'm... the rental board. Nobody don't give me no money for no renting, no board. I just go out help somebody keep them sleeping out there on the street. I got that right.
You need to come up here.
Like he was saying, they're having the problem with the drugs and all this. I've been out here over 35 years. There always have been a problem with that street. Actually, to date, the police is there now picking up someone when I passed through this evening, right there off that street, and you got... he stopped there by the cleaners as well. I understand what he said about the problem, but the problem don't stimulate with him. The problem stimulate because they always have used that area as a drug area, ever since I was 18 years old, and I'm fit to the day. So, I'm telling you that this is not his problem, but the city of Pasagoula are making it his problem. And then when he showed you the pictures on the foundation, then you say...
Whoa, 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 whoa. How are we making his condemned house?
Not you. It ain't true.
Now, chief, let me... at this resident, not on that street, at this resident, is there an issue?
Yes, the...
Were you talking about... all that discussion we were talking about before, was it you talking about the neighborhood, or were you talking about his house?
All these people are congregating at his house.
They come in here from different areas like today. They've been arrested today, what I'm telling you, the same way, coming to that area because this is the area...
The guy's arrested at his house today?
Not at his house, right down the street.
They said that my house was on that street.
They come from Wangle. They come from the cleaner's area. They come from down, like you said, off Market Street area. Anyway, they coming from Walgreens, and they coming to this area. And one of the reason why they come there, I tell him all the time, he's a good guy, and one of the things about it, he don't just up and call the law like the average guy would might call the police and say, "I got these guys keep coming around my place." Okay, as long as he don't do that, they gonna always attack at him, and that's what's going on. And then like I was trying to address to you about the foundation of the home, he said that it's rotting out of added wood. I got pictures here to show you that it's not added wood. It's two or sixes that is supposed to be and is sitting on blocks.
What are you relation to this?
This is my brother. This is my brother's...
That's your brother?
Yeah, and I was helping. My name is Welton Green, and I was helping him get prepared because they was telling him that he need to do some cleanup, and we've been talking about getting all this stuff out of this house, and we've been hauling that stuff out of that house and getting it ready to continue with the work.
Okay.
The guy took pictures of what he wanted to show you, the bad part, but I brought pictures to show you what we were starting to repair coming in the door, not telling you that the house is...
But you don't have a permit to repair the house.
What he was doing, you know, was the fact that he was living in his home like I do at my home and most men do. You repair different things, but not the whole structure of the house. He wasn't coming in to set up a...
That's not... if you do any repair... if you do any repairs on your house, you should have a permit. Am I correct?
Yes.
Well, see, that was a different understanding than he had.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I got some more pictures right here, too.
We can make some copies of those and put them in a file for you.
I just wanted to... you know, I see what you... what's going on with everything. I just wanted everything to be on the table the way it really, really...
Well, I don't think anybody here is lying. Are you saying anybody's lying?
Well, it's come a sense to tell you that...
What are... look, my question.
Like you said, wires under the... electrical wires under the house. They don't have electrical wire under that house, period.
Okay.
Period, and it was just a stitching cord that he was using to plug up solving things while he was working on that area. You don't have no junction box, no kind of electric...
You're addressing one or two issues, and there's a plethora of issues here.
Well, I'm addressing the issue you said. Well, then about lying, I'm trying to address. They show you, yes, they are. When you come and add something, we got enough problem, like you said, to add more to just to make it look...
Here's a picture of a surge protector, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, that's what I was just telling you. He got a stitching cord with the... with the electric... different plugs on, and it was sticking on the... on the ground, on the floor. That's the picture.
Under the house?
Uh-uh.
Not under the house.
On the floor.
On the floor, and this is what he was doing, the repair work, and he got pictures of that.
What you...
So, if you send someone out there...
I don't know what he's talking about.
We put... we put...
You never find electrical wire, what I'm telling you.
What we done, we put a... we putting the plywood down on the floor, and that plug just having just slide out. We go... that same day, my brother had to go do something at the door.
Oh, you talking about it was open so that thing slid?
Yeah.
So, you actually had no floor there, just an open floor?
Right. We redone it.
That's even worse.
We redone it.
Do you have electricity?
Huh? Yeah, electricity, oh. And then...
Councilman Dipton, do you have any more?
There water too, till he cut it off.
And they come and cut the water off, and then he called me and say, "We gotta shut down on that because the city said they closed, they condemning the place." So, that's the far that I know about, but I'm just trying to lay it on the table the way it is.
Okay.
It gotta be done regardless of what we say here. Whatever gotta be done, gotta be done, and that's if y'all give him time to clean it up, fix it right, or whatever gonna take place, it gotta come to that.
Okay.
And that's all he asking for, really. If it's some requirement that y'all asking him for, he want the time. If he can't afford to get whatever needs to be done, he can't afford it. But if he can afford to get somebody there and fix his place, because he been there, like I said, over forty-seven years, he don't want to just throw it away. I mean, that's his home. It might not be a respect I like or you like, but this is this man's home, and that's the whole point of the matter of it. This guy that... whoever coming out to do this, I don't understand the relationship that him and him had, but it wasn't no good one because he'd come out and take pictures and tell them about the car, about this, and then for him controlling other people coming up on the property, like I say, he ain't no mean man to really just call the law every time somebody come up on him. I hear him telling them all the time, "Y'all get away from him. Now, what are y'all doing? Get away from him," but that ain't working. Even his son come home from work, he raised a cane with him. Even to the point where I'm telling him, "Don't put your hand on him now, because they gonna send you to jail."
All right, I got you.
So, do y'all call the police in that instance? Because that's my biggest thing. If... can I ask one more question, chief, and I know we can't... I know there are no names or anything, but have there been police reports filed at this address for things that are going, the things that you... yes?
Not at my house. Not at my house, nah.
Do you have any more that you need to address council with?
Well, no. Like I said, I just wanted to get everything screened out and everything, but like I said, all this other stuff, what they say, the water coming down through... uh-uh, water ain't coming. I was working around. I started on the other side.
Okay.
Water ain't coming, I was working around, I started on the other side, putting that, putting that water around the other side on the outer edge. Water was not coming down inside my house, was not. Now, I was working on the other side, now we, now we, that sheetrock started coming out right there, we tucked that sheetrock out of there, because we been put some new sheetrock up there. You can see it on the picture right there, while we stopped at there, we handling the shovel to stop. Put new windows in there, but we handling the shovel, but stop.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you coming out. Councilman Fornett? You got anything else? Parker? Mr. Berg? Reverend? Call him, Councilman? All right, so...
Mayor, let me jump in one more thing. I do, I meant to have this as part of the agenda or part of the packet, and I'll definitely include it by reference here as the list provided of individuals who have claimed residency at this address. But I've got a, you know, a John Henry Green, a Marcus Liddell McDougall, Teresa Salas, apparently Martin, a Carlos Sherrell Smith, Antonio Roman Hanford, Peter Wynn Egger, Isaac Harris, and a Willie Hurst have all listed thirteen oh six Kenneth as their residents as they were being booked or checked in down on Live Oak at the Police Department. So, and if you go through the packet that was sent to you, you know, there's an extensive amount of, of issues at this property that are police-related, drug-related, and everything else.
I saw a number, you got a whole pack here.
Yeah, so what I would, you know, if it's what this body wants to do, my suggestion would be to uphold the recommendation of the building official with the condemnation of this property a, and the planning board as well.
Okay, thank you. Council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the council affirmed the planning board's condemnation of the property located at thirteen oh six Kenneth Avenue.
Second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, the, the next item on this agenda now is actually the property cleanup or determination of public nuisance at thirteen oh six Kenneth. Now, you know, this is a little bit different in that the first item was primarily the building code related in saying that the property was not habitable and that the owner can no longer live there. Of course, it sounds as though the owner is not living there, it sounds as though he is allowing somebody else to live there.
So, there's somebody living there now?
Not now, the property has been condemned since May sixth. So, to our knowledge, and to the, and the Police Department is routinely checking it, nobody is living at this site at this time. But, you know, I, I could go back through these, you know, these items to show you the condition of the property, but I think we're all pretty familiar with them, they've been in your packet, I think everybody knows what's going on.
No need to go back.
No need to go back, right. So, we get into a different section here, and this talks about the code compliance and the history of the property. If you look at this, and this starts back in two thousand and one, this property has been a, one of constant and repeated, you know, problems. This is just the sheets that we've actually recorded that usually gets to council action. There's been a number of efforts by Brett Stevens, a code enforcement officer, to go out and actually, you know, talk to Mr. Green and try to get him to do something. In fact, as stated previously, in two thousand seventeen, we filed charges, Judge Fundren found him guilty, he appealed it to county court. County court found him guilty, but lower the fines down to a dollar. Mr. Green came in and told me that he was found guilty, and I informed him that he was not, he was found not guilty. I said, "He was found guilty, he just had his fines severely reduced." So, he knew at that time that he was guilty and should have been making some kind of efforts to bring this property into compliance, and it just did not happen. Now, you know, this here is a, the police report from just two thousand and seventeen of, of problems that have occurred at this site, not on Kenneth, but at thirteen oh six Kenneth. And, you know, that's a lot for a city, and this is at just a, a single residence. When you couple this with the number of reports that are actually, that are in yours that describe each individual incidents and the nature of these incidents, you know, it is, it's my opinion that this property is a nuisance to the city in several ways, you know. First of all, the actual condition of the property. We have taken down houses, several houses over the past two years that have been in far better shape than the house we're looking at here. So, you know, this house, in its actual structural-wise, is just not salvageable. Now, the second part of it is, as far as going to a public nuisance or menace, the amount of police calls and activity at this site is, is just unbelievable. And, I mean, I'll agree with Mr. Green in that, you know, the house is condemned, he's not there, and his, his visitors, you know, keep coming by. We've had PD to run them off, and they basically have moved three or four parcels down, and this afternoon, they were sitting in the triangle there across from Wayne Lee's. So, I mean, you know, there is a, you know, problem with, you know, vagrancies in the area, but there's also an opportunity for personal responsibility. You know, if somebody's on your property, make them leave, you know, you know, call the police, you have the ability to do that, and it just has not been done. In fact, from what we've seen in the past, Mr. Green's a lot more cordial to them than you should be if somebody's actually, you know, trespassing and you want to have, and you want to have them removed. But, you know, based on the condition of the property, you know, it's my recommendation that this council adopt something to actually clean the property and, and remove the structure.
How many cars out there, you said they were all full of cars, how many out there belong to Mr. Green, or they're just...
Actually, I think we ran the tags, and there were maybe, maybe nine, and of those, eight of the nine belong to Mr. Green. So, I mean, they are, they are his vehicles, many of them are not operable, and it looks as though many of them have just a lot of material, you know, debris, trash, maybe keepsakes, I don't know what you want to call it, but things that are, are placed in the car. That we, when you look at Google Earth imagery, you can see that some of these vehicles have not moved for two, three, you know, several years. They just sit there. A, a number of the vehicles are actually parked partially on right-of-way. So, you know, they're just sitting there. I'm not sure if they're operable or not, we didn't really get into that. But there are a number of cars there, that Mr. Green does own.
Now, is this, this the only house on that street down in that area?
Actually, two houses were taken down, I think, last week possibly, or the week before. It was because some of the guys that were previously hanging out at Mr. Green's house tried to take up residency at those two houses. So, the owner took those two houses down.
The owner did?
Yeah, but I mean, they, he, he, we, we told him that they needed to take it down, or we would, you know, start some proceedings. They'd been vacant for some, for a while, they had been boarded up, they really were not salvageable, so he just decided to do it himself.
Okay.
Chief is looking into some calls for service there.
All right, anybody have anything else? Anybody have any... Mr. Green, do you want to come up and say anything else?
Like y'all said about all that, them charges all over through there, that not necessarily, I'm a minister for the Lord. I don't be around that house all the time, put all them calls to be calling around, around me. I be out going to church somewhere, doing what I supposed to do for the Lord. I'm a servant of the Lord. You see what I'm saying? So, like I said, all them calls, I don't have nothing to do with that. Now, just calls, just using my address, even if somebody get hurt, they'll use my phone or use that car just to call, or emulate the company, these peoples are, because they're being filled out. Do I supposed to turn my back on them?
Chief, you got anything else? Okay, you got anything? Miss Call?
Well, Mr. Green, I can appreciate stuff that you just made, because you're right, as a servant of the Lord, you're supposed to help others. But when they're committing crimes and doing the things that we see on these reports, man, I, hey, look, I go to church, too, but I think I draw the line right there.
I do, but I'm in church. Most of the time, we don't even see the reports or the actions of the act. They just use that address because it's right on the corner of Hospital Wayne Lee. They automatically say it's thirteen oh six. It can be, it can be right there at the store, it can be right there at the, that whole area right there, but they always don't say thirteen oh six. Ain't nobody gonna tell on each other. Oh, they gonna tell real, they gonna tell real that, oh, somebody got arrested, somebody got arrested. I've been over there, almost got arrested for trying to fight against activists, so... So, what can I, you know what I mean?
Chief, on the offense reports, do you just use that address arbitrarily, or...
No, sure, something's linked into that address, that's, that's incident, so I would have to get each report to say if it's something we rolled up on and saw it, or if it was a call, if it was a fight, or what was going on. I just called the station, it looks like we logged about sixty incidents out there since January seventeen, and, and that's a lot. That's a lot for any one, one place in this city. That's something you would expect from a grocery store or something like that that was dealing with shopliftings and accidents in the parking lots and things like that. That is really off the charts for a, for a residence. And, you know, I certainly can't know the relationship Mr. Green has with a lot of these people that draw us to that house. I can only tell you, we go by, that's where they're at. They're, you know, just hanging out there. At one point, you know, this group had just, just trashed up the little triangle lot across the street, they just hauled everything in over there. Mr. Green may not have nothing to do with that, and I think the condition of the house speaks for itself. But I think it's important that we note that it is a problem. It's a problem for the Police Department, it's a problem for the city, it's a draw. And, you know, just, just my personal opinion as a resident of the city, I think I'm responsible for anything that my property is attracting or causing. You know, if it's causing a nuisance, it's on me, and I need to fix it, and we would have certainly helped him fix it had he made the decision to call the police rather than try to handle it on his own.
Thank you, Chief.
If he wanted the people going.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Anybody else got anything? I'm gonna need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we declare thirteen oh six Kenneth Avenue a public nuisance.
Say it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next one, Mr. Scruggs.
Thirty-eight oh four Victor, this site is located north of Highway ninety or Denny Avenue, basically just north of the subway. It is a property that came before you a couple of years ago, and we actually had Mr. Farrell and his demo crew out there about to take it down. And one of the ladies who had bought the tax sales on the property came forward and asked that it be saved, that she wanted to go forward with purchasing the property. She would maintain it, and she would, you know, begin to actually fix it up. And, you know, here we are, you know, one or two years later, and the site, the house remains in the same kind of condition.
I was out there with y'all when y'all were getting ready to tear that down, right?
Right. So, you know, we've, we've walked through the house, there's, you know, area of floor missing, there's failure throughout.
You walked carefully through that?
Carefully.
Yeah, I remember.
And it is a house that basically just cannot really be salvaged. The value of the house does not equal the amount of effort that it would take to actually, you know, bring it into some kind of habitable or workable condition. Especially if it's going to be used as a commercial structure, it just, it does not meet the current commercial codes. So, being vacant for as long as it has, it's our recommendation that you move forward with the, you know, once again, declare it a public nuisance and authorize this property to move forward and have it taken down.
Is there anybody here to represent this property? Come speak, please.
I'm in Darling Sip, and I retained this property back in August eighteenth, twenty eighteen. And like I said, I wanted to restore the property back. It is, it don't look as bad as the picture. And the inside of the floors, you might have some soft fiber, but they're not bad. Like I said, I want to restore it. I've been keeping the grass cut and...
Now, I've been to it, so I've seen it.
Yes. So, it's not as bad as you said it is.
Oh, I didn't say, I didn't say it was... I didn't say anything. I just said I've been to it.
And I just need time to restore it. I just retained it.
So, you've got it in twenty eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
So, you've had it almost a year?
Seventeen or eighteen?
She said eighteen.
Yeah, I think she probably had access to it in seventeen with the payment of the taxes.
Right.
You know, when we met with her previously, she was letting hold that from sure, and then it probably transferred to her in eighteen, that was my assumption.
That's, that's, I was trying to make sure that I remember to be accurate.
Can the property be repaired? Under, I mean, I know anything can be repaired, but I mean...
You know, if you've got a lot of money burning a hole in your pocket, yes, you could, you could do this. You could also build some view on the site that's probably a lot more compliant, or about to send my money back to you. This house is just bad.
Was it gonna be over fifty percent of it have to be?
Uh, well, this is, uh...
It's not?
That's not what I'm looking for.
Okay. Well, it used to be. Is, is it still gonna be a commercial? Does it retain it?
Yeah, if it's commercial, it's, uh, it's doable. That entire area...
What's your plan?
My plan is to restore it, actually build a shop, and to sell out boots.
What is your immediate plan? Because you're gonna have to take some action. You can't just keep letting it sit there. That's the whole issue. Cutting the grass doesn't, doesn't just comply with the building ordinance.
What I need to do is to keep out from tearing it down, to, to bring it up to code and outside. I mean, this building is a little better than some of the houses down in the area.
Yeah, we gonna get to them, too.
I mean, I'm talking about people living in there.
Well, you know, our job is to make sure the city's cleaned up.
Donovan, did you see any interior pictures, Donovan?
It's got a for sale sign on this stuff. I mean, is it, is it a, does it plans to sell it, or does it plans to rehab it?
At first, my, my plan was to rehab it, and I got in a financial bind, then I decided to sell it, but I wanted to, to restore it. I don't want it to be torn down because it's, it's, it's bad.
That house, that particular house there, that's on my warrant. I received several calls even last year. The neighbors concerned about that house, they want it down because people are living in there.
People, no one is living in there.
Wait, wait, let me, let me finish.
Okay.
Neighbors were complaining that there are people, they knocked the windows out, and they were sleeping in there. Wait, I was with a police officer, went in there and ran them out. I was with him. They want that house torn down.
And you say windows are knocked out?
No, no, the windows were, some of the windows were, they got plywood over the windows, where they had broken in.
And right now, it's a lock, it's on the door where no one can...
Okay. How long you talking about? Were you, thirty days, ninety days? How much time you need? That's been locked there ever since about, about ten, twelve years now.
So, what need to be, what I need to do on the outside?
Ma'am, that's kind of what we're asking you. I mean, we're asking you what your plan is.
Because I have talked to several contractors, and, but it was kind of hard, but if, whatever I need to do to stop the process to condemn it.
Can I ask, are you selling it? Are you gonna rehab it? Because you still didn't answer that question, but there's a for sale sign.
Yeah.
It's listed.
It's listed, yes.
It's listed right here.
But since it haven't been sold, and I was gonna go back to rehab it, after it come off the listing. But since it haven't been sold, and I was gonna go back to rehab it, after it come off the listing.
When does it come off the listing?
Hmm, I have to check, it's, it's only been on there a couple of months, few months.
That house has been like that, for some time in the community over there, they want it, they want it torn down.
Well, I, I think it's soundable.
Mr. Scruggs, how much, give us a range, give us a range for the repairs on that house, give us a figure.
It's gonna be, uh, not very bad, it's my, my opinion. I would say, uh, to bring it up to some decent standard, it'll be, you know, thirty, uh, forty grand minimum, you know.
Thirty-four to green?
Maybe, if y'all are, you know, willing on this, we'll give several property owners the opportunity to do something, but it, it needs to be pretty tight. I mean, if we wanna tell her that she, if you wanna save this property, fine, you have sixty days to, uh, bring it into a, not, not...
Cool.
Don't start a war, but occupyable type of situation. And when we're done with this situation, to where we've given somebody time, we march her, I mean, if, if they've got it, you know, fifty or sixty percent done in, in sixty days, we'll allow them to proceed. You know, but the thing is, we've gotta be able to see good and, 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 uh, constant progress, not just, uh, I cut the grass this week and I'm about to do it, getting around to it. If we see her, you know, if you don't give her sixty days, and she's making a valid effort, you know, we'll let her progress. But that means coming to see me, pulling up her mail, and, and, you know, actually outlining what she plans to do.
Well, it's listed for sale, so, I think the intent is to sell. You wouldn't have it listed and signed a contract.
And I will say that, you know, once the property can buy, um, the process can start back again. If you, future property owner buys it, and then decides they wanna mop off for six months or a year, then it will go back to square one.
Okay, counsel? Anybody else got anything? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the council declare, uh, thirty-eight oh four Victor Street to be a public menace.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next one is thirteen oh six Convent.
This is a property, um, on the south side of Convent, uh, just to the, uh, east of, uh, Past School Street. That, uh, cinder block building, uh, rather sturdy, but, um, it has been in this same condition since approximately, um, you know, for over ten years. Uh, you know, we've got a case that goes back to, uh, oh seven, at which time is actually prepped for council at that time, um, and it, and it has been abandoned. Uh, presently, the, uh, win, front window has been bashed in, uh, or knocked out, and, uh, the building is open and unsecured. Uh, we have not really received any, uh, information or, um, feedback from the owner. Uh, they said they want to restore it, but they have not been really, uh, doing anything that we can see in our file that shows they're trying to, uh, actually do it. They're saying they're gonna do it, but they have not actually done it. It's not a very good picture, but, uh, inside, if you can see that, uh, you'll see that the, uh, the sheet rock and everything has been removed. The, basically, it's open, uh, you've got studs, but you have, uh, no internal walls or other systems. So it's basically just an open house, um, and, you know, based on this current condition, it does not do anything for the community other than, um, you know, as attractive nuisance for, both the rocks at the windows, and to, um, do things they're probably not supposed to be doing inside there. So, uh, you know, this, this recommendation of our department to, uh, remove this structure, apparently, you know, it is not able to be salvaged, it is not, nobody's wanting to buy it. The property owner does not make any effort to do anything other than, you know, leave it in, in the state that it's been in for the past several years. So our recommendation is to move forward with the demo of the structure.
Anyone here to represent this property? Would you like to speak? Okay. All right, is there a motion?
I move that we declare thirteen oh six Convent Avenue a public menace.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next one.
Nineteen ten Forest. This is a property that has also been vacant for approximately three years. The, um, one of the issues with this property is, like so many other properties in town, it, it is located in the flood zone, and, uh, it is below, uh, base flood elevation, which means the actual repair of a home, you know, is much more difficult when you're in those situations. Uh, as it's been vacant, um, of course, it continues to decline in value, so the fifty percent rule or threshold becomes much lower. You said, I think we've got some interior pictures here that, you know, just show that it's, it's just not really marketable, it's not really livable. It's just another one of our properties in town that has been, uh, left alone. Uh, the owners have walked away from it and have done very little to actually, uh, maintain it. Uh, I go, I look at our file, and it's, uh, it's like it started back in, uh, oh four with some, um, initial, uh, LOVs, uh, through twelve, thirteen, seventeen, and nineteen. Uh, there has been a, um, you know, a number of, uh, issues with this property as far as, um, LOVs and not, uh, maintaining it. Uh, as stated, I talked to, uh, Mr. Burke, who is our, uh, code enforcement supervisor this afternoon, and he said that the property's been vac, basically vacant since he says, uh, it's two thousand and seventeen. Um, it's our recommendation that the, uh, property be, uh, demolished, uh, and the lo, and the lot cleared.
So there's power in the building, though?
It does look as though there is a, uh, a, a meter there, yes. Uh, we've not been very, uh, able to get, uh, just be power to disconnect, uh, power.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that doesn't mean that there's power there, that just means they hadn't pulled a meter. And they've cut the power, cause that's the way it is on the last two houses we went and looked at. Is anybody here to represent this property? Anybody here to represent this property? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we declare nineteen ten Forest Street to be a public menace.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next one.
Twenty-two oh two Chico. Um, it's a commercial structure, uh, toward the south end of Chico. Uh, I think the pink, uh, building, uh, is probably something you can, um, recognize. I will say that, uh, the property owner contacted, uh, code enforcement and said that they wanted to save the building. Uh, they put on a, a, a much more neutral paint color, and I, I do believe they repaired some of the windows that were, uh, needed to be repaired. Uh, you know, to be honest, you know, he and I discussed it, um, the building looks as though it's in, um, a much better condition now that they have addressed some of the issues with it, and we think it can be, uh, passed the file. We don't know, we need to take it up for demolition tonight.
All right, um, do I have a motion to table it? Hmm?
We're here.
Yeah. You can talk if you want, but we're gonna table it, so no actions will be taken.
Well, you can tell us what your plans are.
Tell us what your plans are.
This is my mom's building, but she just can't hear me.
Okay. Sure.
Um, I did call Adam, and he will, said he will come and meet with me, say whatever else is needed to be done. I'm having a problem with people busting my windows out. This is, I just paid seven hundred dollars to have three front windows replaced. Joey at, um, Pass Point, the guy at Dixie will tell you, this is a ongoing issue. Now, Adam did tell me follow a police report every time this happens.
Right.
Okay. I have had people just constantly vandalize, and we are trying to sell the building. I've talked to Ricky Sutherland, you know, he has all my paperwork, but until I talked to y'all, I just kind of didn't wanna go further with listing yet. Um, I will get with Adam, he can come, we'll do anything that we need to do to bring it up to code. People breaking my windows and us constantly replacing them, I don't know what to do. Can I board them, or do I keep paying thousands of dollars to replace these windows?
You know, I would say work with Donovan, I'm sure Donovan will let you put a board up and cover the inside.
I mean, it's ugly, and I'm trying to keep it presentable and nice, but, I mean, they are just...
I know, I've been by there and seen them.
I've replaced the door, last year I replaced the door. And it's just, it's getting costly, but I, I mean, I'll do it, you know, I just...
We will work with you any way we can, Donovan will work with you.
Now, I have had the lady at the dance studio, she has come to us, she really would like to purchase the property because she has no parking. She has very limited parking. We are fine with her tearing the building down and making a parking lot. And Ricky suggested that I get with her once more before I listed it, just to see if she is wanting to do that. So I will do that.
Yeah, do that.
Um, that's our plans.
What's your name and address for the record, please?
Me?
Yeah, sorry.
Tamara Mallett.
Just speaking that way.
Tamara Mallett.
Okay.
And you want my home address?
No, 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 no.
Okay, and also, my mom has a business there, she has Chico Street Furniture, she's been there fifty years. She has never had an issue, we also have a rental property across the street, which we have a contractor in there now. So she is totally abided by the rules, and just, you know, thanks for giving her opportunity to take care of this.
Yeah, like I said, we're always willing to work with folks if they'll come to us and tell us what they got planned and...
Yes, sir.
And get it done, so, good deal.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Motion to table it?
Well, wait, should we, do we, do we table it, or take no action?
All right.
Withdraw it.
We'll just withdraw it. All right, so we're gonna withdraw this one at twenty-two oh two Chico Street. All right. Next one?
I think we're halfway there.
Do we need to vote on it?
I'm asking, I'm asking Ryan.
He's saying no, so...
He wishes to withdraw it, and that's what he's saying.
Yes, I'll withdraw it, so...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, saving the record.
So no motion, I withdraw it.
He withdrew it.
Twenty-three fourteen Catawba. Uh, this is located just to the, uh, west east of the, uh, apartments that were torn down, uh, two or three years ago. Uh, this is, uh, a single-family structure that, uh, has been a, uh, a problem property for quite some time, uh, going back to as far as two thousand and ten. Um, this is a property, a view from the street. This is, uh, the rear of the property. This is the interior that has been, uh, you know, we've, we've sent letters, uh, they get in and they begin to do some things, but they really never, uh, complete it. And, um, I think they've drawn just to the window. But it is a, uh, it's a prob, it's a property in a area that, uh, is blighted, and oftentimes blight begets blight. So if, you know, you have, if you can start cleaning some stuff up, it may have a positive impact on some of the surrounding properties. Uh, Catawba in that area, uh, is one that we are trying to turn around, we've taken down a couple of buildings. But we have, uh, sent numerous letters on, on code violations, but, you know, this is one that just kind of sits, sits around and, uh, has not had anything done with it. It's our recommendation that the structure be removed, taken down, uh, through a lot cleaning process.
Is there anybody here that will represent this property? You guys wanna come up?
My name is James Claude. Uh, one of the problems I'm having with the property, fixing the property right now, I just had, uh, two rotator cuff surgeries, so, I mean, it's, I'm kind of limiting what I could do right now, but, uh, I'm just, I'm looking, you know, we've been painting, putting, uh, floors down and stuff like that, that's the other side there. That ain't the side that we working on right now, we working on the other side first. Once we get that side together, we'll move to that side, uh, and, and get it together. But, uh, I didn't, I had, I've been to court with this once before, with the city, uh, and, and, uh, probably about six month, maybe a year ago, something like that, and, you know, we've been, like I said, we've been working on it, I've been doing what I can. And, uh, I didn't understand why, after we settled this in court, why did they go back over here to this house in the first place? What's, what, you know, what's the big problem? Is somebody supposed to be living there? Because I know, I got a, uh, note on the door saying that somebody was using water, so I called the, uh, the city, and told them it's impossible for somebody to use water there because it got everything unhooked. You know, keep anybody from going in there and use water, so, you know, I need to know what I need to do, you know, because I'm kind of limited right now what I can do because of, because of the surgery and stuff I just had.
When do you plan to get back to work on it?
Uh, probably, probably, uh, next week.
Okay. How long do you think you can, that it would take for you to get it back up to code?
Uh, one side, one side, it, it, it won't take, it won't take, uh, very long, but the other side, it gonna take, it gonna take me a while because I gotta get this side done first, you know, finish that, the, uh, side that I'm working on.
Six months, eight months, year?
Six months, six months to eight months, yeah.
Okay. Um, have you had, Donovan, um, this has been on the books, how long now, a year?
Uh, we've noticed it, uh, had problems about six months ago, and then, but like I said, it's been, uh, we've got warrants and property going back to, uh, eighteen, five, five eighteen was, uh, set out just for the last structural apartment, so, he's been at it for just over a year, and, uh, that's the progress that we've seen. You know, if, if you wanna, you know, equip the gentleman, like I said previously, uh, give him sixty days, uh, put out the rest of it, and see what kind of progress he made, have him pull permits, have him ask about food, we can definitely do that. But, uh, you know, we've gotta be able to kind of set a benchmark as clear as he is, where he needs to be, but he's gotta be a little bit better than that. For us, I've been about significant progress.
All right, so, um, my thought is, my recommendation, I'd say, would probably be give him a sixty-day window. And you work with Donovan, and let's see what you can, what kind of progress you can make in that sixty days.
Okay, that's fine.
And then, um, we're gonna, I would recommend declaring it as a, as a, um, public menace pending, uh, successful, uh, work under his authority.
Fine, that's fine.
So, in other words, if you, if you stay doing what he asks you to do, but if you stop, then it, then we will take action without any further notice to you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we declare twenty-three fourteen Catawba to be a public menace with any action, further action by the city, uh, to be deferred at the discretion of the, uh, code enforcement, uh, subject to satisfactory progress being made by the owners to rehabilitate the structure. And bring it into code compliance.
Yep. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, so that'll give you a good lengthy time, you can work with him and, uh, get it where you need to be.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next one.
Twenty-three twenty-one Jackson. Uh, just to the west of fourteen... Uh, just to the west of Fourteenth Street. This is a vinyl-clad house. The owner's doing a pretty good job at maintaining the yard, but what we have is a complaint from the neighbors, stating that the house has been, his house is infested with termites, and it's actually come and go over to their house. And that's a concern that that neighbor has. You know, here is a picture, I guess the west side of the house, you know, showing some siding missing both the, in the, on the roof structure, and there on the side. According to our records, file was created back in 'oh six, a letter was sent stating it was a dilapidated structure in 'oh six. And it really has not been, um, ever lived in since that time. Not really sure if the neighbors just have been doing enough to basically keep code enforcement off of their backs, but they have not made a true effort to rehabilitate the house and actually get it occupied. I mean, that's what, really what we need here, I mean, it's great to have a structure that's sitting there that we're collecting taxes from, uh, that, that's definitely positive. But it also is a, you know, it can be considered a blackout on the, on the, on the street, because it is a vacant structure that does not do anything but take up space. And if it is neglected and if it is not maintained, you know, they do tend to deteriorate. I mean, simple things like, no matter what kind of condition the house is in, you know, with the dead weeds and debris hanging along the, the front, it's just not an attractive, attractive house. But, um, you know, it is, um, I think it's marginal as far as the overall appearance of it, but it is a home that has been vacant for over ten years, and we're presenting it to you tonight for consideration.
Is there anybody here to represent this property?
Yes, sir, you wanna come up and speak?
This house is on twenty-three twenty-one Jackson. I'm trying to find out what's the, what's the problem, because this house here is way better shaped than a lot of other houses that I've seen. And so forth, the siding, somebody could easily pull that siding, the siding off the side, because I was over there one week, and it was up there, and the next week, the next two weeks, I went back, it was off. So it could have easily been done, and so forth, the termite thing, termites can be in anybody's house. It can be next door, it's just a complaint, somebody trying to complain, just to, and my opinion about the thing is just the fact that, somebody just want that house, 'cause I talked to the lady next door at one point in time. I think she just want the property, because it's been sitting there so long, and she was telling me that part of the house is on her property. Now, I really don't know, uh, whether it's on their property or not, but the yard is immaculate. And what's in the house, I don't know, 'cause I hadn't been inside. The family members stay in Texas, Houston, Texas, and they asked me, would I keep the yard up? I said, yeah, I keep the yard up. And if it's anything else that need doing around there, I'd do it. But access was inside, I don't have a key to go inside, I don't know what's inside, but you, yourself can go out there and see the house.
I'll be by there.
Okay. But, like I say, uh, so forth, the siding on the side, I, I really don't know that.
So you don't, you don't own the house, you just cut the grass?
No, no, I'm ju, I'm just a representative of them, and I just keep the yard up, you know? I'm a neighbor up there, when they were staying here in Marspan.
Could you state your name for the record, please, I'm sorry? State your name, your name is?
James W. Thickepin.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and if, if it's anything that I need to do, or let them know, then it would be done. That's what I'm trying to find out, what do we have to do to eliminate the problem?
Donovan?
I mean, if he can't get in the house, it's kinda hard for him to fix the problem. You know, if the structure is left, um, closed up for, you know, three or four months, five or six years, you know, it gets to a state that is not livable. The humidity we have, and a, a structure that just closed up like that is going to deteriorate. You know, either they need to make some kind of plan to convey the property, rent the property, or, you know, make it viable, but to sit there, but to keep it here, you know, basically just a mothball, is probably not the best approach. Otherwise, they'll come in here ten years from now, or five years from now, and they'll find the structure has not, no longer being, uh, rehabilitated.
What, are you saying you need to get inside to see?
It would be, yeah, that, that would be a, a, one, one approach, if the owner wants to, you know, work with us and let us get inside, and demonstrate that they have a plan to, you know, put the house back into a living condition, that's what we'd like to see happen.
Well, I can make arrangements, I can, as a matter of fact, when I finna leave here, I would call them.
But you, you haven't been in it.
Sir.
And, but you have not been in it?
No, I hadn't, I hadn't.
And how long have you been taking care of that?
With the property?
Yes, sir.
Last two summers.
Okay. So what if we do this, what if we, uh, what if we make a motion to, just like we did the last, do a sixty-day, let you get with the owners and work with Donovan to see if we can't resolve this?
Okay, there's no problem.
Okay.
You know, I see, I.
You go with that, Don?
Matter of fact, when I leave here tonight, I called him, tell him I need access to the house.
Yeah.
And see what kind of conditions is on the inside.
Okay, perfect.
Let me see.
And then, once y'all make access, if it's repairable, you'll get it repaired. And if not, then we'll move from there. But just work with him.
If there's repairs that need to be done?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, okay.
See, that's, that's, that's what I like about people like you coming up here. You say, we're gonna do this, we'll do it, work with him, get it done, we have no more issue.
Whatever have to be done.
Yeah, that's great, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Thickepin. Thank you. You, you may sit down.
All right, so do I have a motion on that?
All right, last one.
Hold on. I gotta have a motion on this.
I move that we declare this property a public menace, but we table it for sixty days, I'm trying to get it right. Table it for sixty days so that the owners.
No, you just, for sixty days?
Well, the, give them sixty days to work with you, get it where it needs to be.
Basically, exactly what we did on the last one, Ryan, Ms. Palmer?
Okay.
Yeah, no, recreate the will, that's fine, I agree.
All right, do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye? Any opposed?
No.
All right. Property cleanup, determination of whether or not property is to be declared a public menace on Peach Street.
Forty-five oh-seven Peach Street. This is, uh, north of Telephone, off of MacArthur. And I think this is a little more cut and dry than the previous one. The, uh, house appears to have been burned a couple of years ago, and, um.
Hadn't we already had this one before?
I know you've talked to my department a good bit about this property, and I think we're finally, we're finally getting it here for you. Uh, this is the interior condition of the structure. Vagrancy. Our recommendation is that you adopt the ordinance.
Anybody here to represent this property? 'Cause I know this one well. This is the one we went in. All right.
Mayor, I move that we declare forty-five oh-seven Peach a public menace.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, is there a motion to, we don't have any amendments to that, consent. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question about item seven J, and I see Jackie in the audience. I had a question about this particular change order, and it said that an additional forty-five days has been added to the contract time for the work, but there was no explanation as to why an additional forty-five days were needed.
The additional stuff, the additional stuff that were added to the project is going to happen towards the end of the project, and that's what the contractor's requested to get it complete. They, excuse me, compared to the timeline to get field trade play and the total completion, is that time available on schedule without impacting any of the schedules? So it's, it's, it's reasonable.
Was this, uh, particular issue, was this something that was part of an alternative bid, or was it something that was outside the contract that was going to be done separately? I'm just curious why, forty-five days is a lot to add, and, at, at one junction. I just didn't know if this is something that, you know, was either unforeseen, or was something that was going to be handled outside the contract with, with tally, originally?
It's additional stuff that was seen as best to include into this contract, all under one responsibility. And so it's, it's stuff that was hoped to be done, but was not bid specifically in that manner.
If I can, Mr. Burke, basically, because, and Kevin, who's from BMA, is standing there, and he will correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause he and I talked about this right before the meeting, is that, as I appreciate it, you know, the milestone will not move. Where this came about was, is that the project is running under bid. It was something that we intended to do if we had the money to do so, which is the landscaping, which is the reason for the change order.
Okay, I, I just, and I don't remember all the nuances of how the contract came about and, and what the alternatives were, but, I, I mean, I'm assuming somewhere in that was a plan to do the very work that's the subject of the change order, so.
Yes.
Basically, we're taking what would have been bid as a separate contract and now adding it to the main contract as a change order. Is that, have I got that essentially right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Any have further questions on this? So, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sir, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, before we get into the remainder of the agenda, could I make a motion that we take a short recess, maybe ten minutes or so?
Sure.
Okay.
Ten-minute recess.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.